And I got buddy that did.
Somebody yeah.
And he married a girl from over there and they go.
You're fine.
Yeah, you're.
I want to go over it and see if like, I got it.
His island name is ninety-five percent.
Oh yeah.
But the island that she's from, most of the dump, the pretty is on that island. As he come over.
Take your hat, get your, like, cover your ears up, get your long sleeve shirt.
Okay. Love it, boy.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think he'll love it.
They go out.
Rolls down a meal.
Have to be careful.
So, yeah. Yeah, they don't worry about that. He likes it.
James.
Man don't know it.
Yeah, because I take the city water.
Boom.
Right.
Next thing.
Be out here.
Yep, totally.
Well, all this.
No, my scene is gobbled, huh? Yeah.
They'll know.
Yeah, that was Michigan.
Yep. Holly and I came out of Dollar General like right after they opened this new one. And these two dudes come up, I mean, they were just, they were just, and I was like, he's like, oh, that's good. License plate, I might just try, I'm a gobbled you. And I'm like, it says M. Go blue, like the sticker above it, M. Go blue. So it's license plate, so it's the same thing. But he's like, I'm a gobbled you. And I'm like, have another one, buddy.
I was always pretty late.
Uh huh. There's. Oh, yeah. What did we, yeah, I liked it.
Oh, yeah.
Actually, there's a lot of Michigan fans down here because when I went onto the website to with that, I mean, I went through like almost a dozen of them and it was like, nope, taken, 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 taken for personalized U of L plates in Arkansas. Yeah, lots of Michigan fans here.
Bridges, who was now deceased, but she had real estate.
Yeah.
And so when everybody was coming in with their email address, hers was real ones, you know, blah, blah, blah. It was good alone.
Yeah, no problem.
Right.
Not wrong. It's real.
And once you see it like that, it's hard to unsee it like that.
Alone.
I mean, you're not wrong. I mean, they're wrong. Those also spell re.
And so when it was, and it's doing, you know, it's gonna be like, you know, it's barbed, it's next, I'm gonna do bar, maybe I play about, he had bar.
But start acting up, they'll shut us down.
You know, this.
Bunch of work.
Bar mat.
Yeah, boy, that's how it's from inside, run.
Be like, well, I spend a lot of time around, you know, the bar, so.
Yeah. Yes, I searched him in, and you know, that's my house number.
Yeah.
Goes, goes.
And that's. You don't need to do that.
Right.
That's what I think. Well, I mean, you need an alternative to, if you're gonna do.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Because I, I was telling our daughter, you know, she's seventeen, you know, and we told her, we're like, you're gonna have to win a more professional email address. Because her email address is grubs. First, she sits down, she grubs, it's like a, it's like a grudzilla. I was like, he can't look at the jobs and colleges and things, you need something.
Yeah, I got my plan, Lord.
Email, I don't know, sorry, I didn't answer, sorry, just wanted to.
Oh, I saw it just actually before I came over here. I got to sit down and look at it.
In bridge.
Yeah.
There, but I don't know.
Yeah, they, I'll be surprised if they show up.
I don't think so. We've gone nothing and I asked Chris. Yeah, I mean, I can't even get laughs to say myself.
Um, look.
Hey, for seven thousand. Oh, we could, it'd be a lot. We'll pay the S.
Oh, yeah. Well, that's like everything else, you can. Yeah, spin to your right a little bit. Look up there.
Yeah.
So, somebody has to work underneath.
Need to fix my. You know, one of the ladies that comes, she usually sits out there in the audience, her name is Danisha.
Oh, yeah.
And calls her dementia.
Yeah.
But her email is Silvermane. She's got.
Oh, yeah.
That's a pretty cool.
I think she's.
Yes, sir. I just put it on there because that is some.
Yeah, but I thought it was documentation of them specifically, but, but, okay.
Yeah.
I didn't know if I missed something.
No, 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 and, and I meant to go back and inform, sit down, she, I didn't send it to Zach, like, we're not really talking about. But I had just put that on the. That's right. Yeah.
That's right, yeah, okay.
Zach, can I send you something on the AP tax that ordinance tables? What is it? No, it would have been a while back.
Yeah, we were generally speaking and we didn't know.
Send it to me.
Was it you? Okay, wait, James, James. I'd send it to James. And I meant to go back and pull that and send it out to everybody, but.
Yeah, I remember seeing it in my email a while back.
This, this is when we didn't work on.
You mean, turn it on?
They came in today, they wants to come to the regular.
That's only, that's in three minutes.
The workshop needs to discuss things that are going to constantly, so we get a general lobby in. Has to affect the rest.
Okay, fine, fine, we'll go for me.
Right, absolutely.
Almost, we're ready. All right. Welcome everyone to the City Council Workshop meeting, May eighth. Um. Barbara, will you call the role, please?
Mark Higman.
Here.
Zach Jeffrey.
Here.
Jack Paul.
Here.
Cal Marx.
Here.
John Snyder.
Here.
Larry Hill.
Here.
Thank you, and thank you all for attending. Uh, next on the agenda is the AP tax. We talked about this briefly, uh, in the last couple of times that we've met. And, uh, we said, well, let's put it on the agenda for tonight, uh, and see if we could talk through and have a consensus as to where we're going with this. And so just, uh, Barbara, you said you there, you don't have any handouts on that as of yet.
I don't.
But, but I think when we talked about this, um, this is strictly for food product. Am I right on that?
They can, uh, okay, actually Barbara did send it to me.
Lodging too, isn't it?
I'm sorry.
Wasn't it for lodging too?
Well, so the, the nature of the tax anywhere is for lodging and prepared food.
Yes.
But the ordinance was twenty twenty, the ordinance number was twenty oh nine, it's a long, or, I mean, it's an ordinance, a long line. Uh. Food was excluded from this ordinance that was passed by the city.
That's right.
At that time. Uh, by time along, here's the column, it's an ordinance to provide for the enforcement and collection of taxes landing by the city upon the grocery receipts or gross proceeds derived from renting, leasing, or otherwise furnishing hotel, motel, or short term, short term condominium rental accommodations for sleeping, meeting, or party room facilities, or anything in the city, prescribing other matters pertaining thereto, so.
What about mobile vendors? Would that not also qualify?
So, the way I look, the way, I'm no lawyer, but the way I look, but. No, that's, no, in the sense that there's no food involved in this tax.
They're covering, they're covering the state sale, uh, s- a sales tax, they're supposed to pay sales tax.
When we did this. We were trying to get the whole thing passed.
Right.
Because we knew what's come.
Right.
There was resistance on, on part of it. So what we did was we passed the hotel part of it. Uh, and in my opinion, we just need to go in back and include the food portion. Whatever makes it legal, we need to just pass the food portion of that and something that you just said that I hadn't thought about, but is, you like, the Airbnb's and stuff like that, they should, we should be collecting on that if it was right now. Then for the last, ever since that was passed.
I spoke to someone a week ago and he said he had twelve Airbnb's here inside the city limits of Mayflower.
Yeah, surprise?
And I think we're dropping the ball on that. I, I don't know, we've talked about this before, I don't know. Barbara, you, you remember, I asked you to go to the state and find out if they're just like on, on mobile vendors. How do we know that there's, there's taxes being taken out, uh, being submitted on our behalf? Now, the Airbnb's, just I'm understanding what this guy was saying, you, you do it online. He's got an agency that, you know, that all, most all of them, uh, apply by or, or, or hired by, you know, I won't say in Mayflower and blah, blah, blah. And when you, when you confirm that, the taxes and everything is.
Should be rolled over by the management company.
It should be.
So, I do remember going in when we were talking about this before and I found an Airbnb, pulled it up to see what it would cost for there and, and it breaks it down by taxes and it does show that there, that, that it should be collecting that tax.
For the city.
For the city.
The two and a half plus the two.
Yes, but where that's going, or if it's actually being paid, I, I don't know, I mean, I didn't.
There's the reason why, because technically that's supposed to go in place and to be used for a specific purpose, right?
Yeah.
Do we get a breakdown of those revenue receipts from, uh, Arkansas Grocery Receipts Act, that from revenue?
We can, of the inside.
So, we need to look and see if we're getting that two percent off of those rentals, because if it is, those all have to be earmarked for marks of gravity.
Okay, I'll, I'll connect right now and see if I can find it.
One of the things that Barbara, if I remember correctly, when we were, I was asking you to look into that. Uh, it was, it was almost like, where are the taxes or where are the benefits when people come here and buy gasoline? We don't, we're not earmarked on that distribution of taxes. It rolls up and then it goes back and it, based on your population for this, each city municipality, there is a small portion that is returned to us.
Right.
And we weren't even able to find out what percentage that was. It's almost like, well, Mayflower, let's give them a half a percent or point two five percent or whatever. And so, that's, that's crazy to begin with, but it goes back to when you were trying to track down some, uh, where's the money from those Airbnb's? How do we know that we're getting that, even though it, you know, it may be indicating on, on what somebody pays for? But it was very difficult, what I'm getting is, it was difficult for Barbara, Barbara, I'm not trying to speak for you, but you, you state your, the situation. She said it was real frustrating to go through as many people and they couldn't give her a straight answer as to how you could verify that.
That is true, and the, the, on the gasoline, I, I basically remember, they said it didn't matter where in the state you bought your gasoline, it would be the same amount of tax would come by to us. However, if you lived in Arkansas, but you went across the Oklahoma line, you know, then Oklahoma's gonna get that.
Yeah, those taxes are all gathered into a central, to, it's a revenue essentially.
Yeah.
Those, those fuel taxes, that's why you don't get charged tax on top fuel, it, it brings up the, it's a kind of crossing and all that.
My, my point is, it was with the gasoline was frustrating, try to get down to whatever on the, the taxes for the Airbnb to, to verify that we are getting that, even though it may be, may be in charge on that. It was difficult to, to find out anybody that could tell us, and we just got to do some more research on that, right, Barbara?
I would think that hamburger tax would be easier to find, because it's expensive about how you can spend that money.
Well, it, the fact of the matter is, it would be here.
Right.
And so we know, you know, generally, the business that, that that would, uh, fall under, we, we would be anticipating some type of, of a lot of, or amount of money.
We know it's coming, we know some restaurants are coming. And that would, that would help out our, you know, the advertising, party recreation and all that there.
Right, but, but again, are we saying that the mobile vendors that sell food, that would not?
I think it's a hamburger tag.
That's prepared food, yes.
Then hamburger.
So, that would, that would be, we already have that, you know, in addition to one restaurant, you know, that type of, but, um.
Well, I think Zach, if we can't find it, don't know about it, how do we know we're spending the money properly? Because like I say, it goes, we go to parks, recreation, we don't even know we're collecting.
Yeah, that's what, that's what we're saying. We've got to do some more research in terms of, okay, how we, how is that money supposed to be coming to us? Whereas right now, we're not sure that we're even getting any of this money.
And if we are, then we're not spending it a point.
Well, it looks like that we don't, but when I say it doesn't look like we're getting it, uh, if money was coming into us, Crystal would know about it. You see what I'm saying?
She's got a sign that's down.
But, but you see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
That is, uh, we have got to look more into the Airbnb's, make sure that we're getting that tax, uh, as well as the mobile vendors. On the, what I'm regarding to the A, A and B, uh, AMP taxes.
Well, we're. Totally two separate things there.
Okay.
We need to check on the mobile vendors to make sure that we're receiving the two and a half percent currently on the book sales tax.
That's the sales tax.
Sales tax. As far as an AMP tax, there is no AMP tax that is, that is imposed on mobile vendors as of now. There's not, because our ordinance to that, the twenty oh nine, in twenty twenty, that tax was only applied to lodging.
Right, I understand that, but it.
We would have to change that ordinance to food and then it would be.
But it will all, it will always fall under the umbrella.
Yeah.
Whether they, uh, uh, a, uh, mobile vendor or a.
Yes.
Concrete building restaurant, correct?
Yes, it, it, anyone who sells prepared food, parks that makes fried chicken and sells it out of the middle, gets charged with that tax.
But base, showing self.
So, I think what we ought to do is, I think what we ought to do is just make it easy. Let's just, let's just pass that, or let's, let's put that together, let's adopt that in what, what we've got already, if we can do that. And then let's just, that, 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 it comes with all that, that, that part is solved. And then we, then we go back and in the meantime, start figuring out where is the money, you know, are we getting what we, you know, and how do we permanently put in response?
Okay. Now, with that, then.
If.
We, we would have to talk to Duskin.
Yeah. I'm sure it was originally written, there was one originally proposed that had food and lodging in it, I'm sure it was edited to take out the food and go on the lodging, so.
Does anyone, uh, know, uh, when we had the restaurant, was, had so many people here that had such good sales? Did we see a, a significant amount of money, was from sales tax come through that business, or was that? Are we talking about the existing, like smacks? Yes, sir, or the? We're losing a lot of money.
I'm not, I'm not a mathematician, that'd be exact, but, and the way I've got to figure it out. The level one, you know, we, when we were getting a lot of their, that revenue there, you know, you, you give someone who committed by a house that they're spending fifty thousand dollars in a pot on lumber, we would get the taxes off. Takes a lot of meals to equal up, something that we, that we really measure. But the, the, the key to that, I feel like, is to have five or six restaurants that's gonna help make up what we've lost over there, because it's gonna take a lot more food sales. So. To answer your question, Colonel, based on the March numbers, so far from March, there is a line item in our sales tax, the current two and a half percent, one percent to street, one and a half percent to general, uh, restaurants are for twenty twenty-four. Restaurants year to date have accounted for six thousand five hundred forty-two dollars and ninety-two cents as a launch. Uh, which is, you talk about the, the one restaurant closing down, you have to feel it, because in twenty twenty-three, year to date, that same number was fifteen thousand five hundred. And now it's down to six thousand five hundred, we'll have ten dollars less.
And that's one thing that spurred me to start asking questions about the, the mobile food trucks that we have here, and I call the state. State will not give us anything, I talked to.
No.
Crystal, but they, you, you have, you have to ask, if you think that there's a, something wrong, you have to write, the mayor has to write a letter. We'll do the investigation and then we're probably not gonna tell you anything.
Well, see, there's, and I don't know what these lines are, that there's fifteen different categories on the sales tax breakdown, month by month. There's another line for specialty foods. I don't know if that's, the trucks, I don't know if that's, there's one for restaurants, there's one for specialty foods. I don't think we have a specialty food market here yet, we, today, more than twenty twenty-three, for March year to date, twenty-three was fifteen hundred. Year to date, through March in, uh, twenty-five is two thousand and forty-two. Maybe specialty foods is that drug, I, I don't know, I'm speculating. And I'm just going in, food truck people, and like, there's no way to enforce this really, but. My food truck's gotta do cash sales too.
Oh, yeah.
All that stuff gets under, I mean.
Well, you're reporting.
And, and, and I don't, I need to, this, but a lot of them don't add tax on the back end. They somehow figured the tax into the price, you went and it's five bucks for a burger, you pay five bucks. We should have did five dollar burger, but you, you see what I'm saying? Whenever they report it to the state, they would work it out, where the burger was four dollars and nineteen cents and the tax you paid up the other eight cents, is the way they do it, but.
And, and here's the other thing, when you were talking about number one, even though the lumber is purchased somewhere else, if it's coming to Mayflower, we would get the sales tax. So if the lumber was purchased even at number one and went out of the city limits, we wouldn't get anything.
Right.
So.
They said, the sales tax goes to the point of destination.
Yes.
I think, you know, numbers should go up, at least for a little while, when the normal houses being built, they should.
I asked this, I asked the same thing because there has, I know at least three houses in Vineyard Phase Two that sold, so those have been built, but yet the increase in our sales tax, I don't know if it takes a quarter for them to collect it and then the next quarter we get it, but we're not, we're not seeing an increase. To me, like, maybe we should have, because we have right now seventeen open building permits in the Vineyard.
And that building in material supplies category, that's a, that's a, it's a hurtful decline.
Mm-hmm.
Good time. From twenty-three at a hundred and eight thousand dollars year to date, to twenty-four, seventy-four thousand dollars, to twenty-five at fifty-four thousand dollars. That count of what we were two years ago.
And those who may did call the supplier of the lumber for the houses that are being built over here to make sure that they had the city of Mayflower and the amount that, of taxes that they should be collecting, and they assured me that they were.
That's, I know myself, like, I purchased concrete from already an ex company, same now. They go by the address, from according out in the county, I get charged with the county tax rate, according in Mayflower, get charged with Mayflower tax rates. According in Conway, I get charged with Conway tax rate. It, it varies based on where the destination is of the, of the service.
When Brian was giving me an overview, uh, the new tax plan, I asked that very question. How do you know where this, you know, make sure that we're getting the sales tax? And he said he had a program that indicates every city.
Yeah, it's a GIS program.
Yes, that it captures that and that's the, the money that goes to that, uh, at the end of the month. It's done on a monthly basis, so it sounded like he was doing the right thing. I, I hope that the other concrete companies are doing it, but.
So we need, we need to, we have time for this.
Right.
We need to look at amending the AMP tax, talk to Duskin about what, put it on a reading or whatever, ordinance to add food, get some other comment, food work.
But are we in agreement to, to make sure that the mobile vendors are included in that as well?
Yes.
Oh, but they, yes.
Okay.
There's one, absolutely.
I believe this should be.
They're on heart. Even like heart.
Well, that's what I'm saying, that's, that's going to happen, but I'm, but more specifically, the mobile vendors. Yeah, we don't want to lose that on that, okay? Barbara, would you make a note of that so that we can?
Okay.
Okay, all right, thank you. Moving on, uh, fire codes, ordinance twenty-five oh three. Chris, is that you?
Yes.
I'm sorry, um, they changed the website and I'm struggling to find it.
I laid out my food, uh, they, they changed where the stuff was stored at and. Uh, this is the ordinance we've been talking about since the beginning of the year. And were a myriad of reasons we've not been able to move forward with it, uh, but our, I hope we can resolve any outstanding legal issues that we have with it tonight. Uh, and this is strictly just trying to go through and update the Mayflower municipal code as it relates to the fire department to bring it into twenty twenty-five, because a lot of these codes are from, uh, decades old and referencing obsolete languages and practices that we no longer adhere to. And if my thinking would work, we're gonna be in a better spot. All right, so my intent, like I said, is to update this, the goals, to amend the code to reflect our current operating procedures and practices, uh, resequence some of these subsections to a more logical manner and delete some of the obsolete references and, uh, and bring some more gendered neutral language into the code, fire noon versus fire the fire and stuff like that, just trying to bring it to where we need to be right now. So I'm not gonna bore you, I'm gonna go through this as fast as I can, y'all have had this information for several months now. I'm just gonna highlight the substantive changes that have been made. Uh, we, we've added a subsection regarding part-time compensation, because we do have a payday route throughout the day. And this is the criteria that they would follow over, and as well as the volunteer compensation and how the volunteers can be paid. So those are what those two sections reference, and if anybody has any questions on any of this, I'm just gonna keep rambling until somebody stops me, if that's okay. Uh, the next piece is deleting the obsolete references to subscribers and non-subscribers to the fire department. Back in early two thousands, we passed an ordinance, uh, by popular vote that allowed the fire department to collect fire dues, as they're commonly referred to, on property tax assessments, so we no longer have members of the fire department. There's no subscribers and non-subscribers, everybody is a member of the fire department essentially. So that language is obsolete, needs to be deleted. That jumped way ahead. All right, uh, again, deleting references to membership dues and reinforcing our current base rates for residential and commercial properties that they are to be collected within the fire district, there are other fees that the city council agreed to, uh, and back in twenty-two that those are referenced by, uh, statute and ordinance twenty twenty-two dash nineteen. But the base rates for most people in the fire district, sixty-five for residential, hundred and thirty-five for commercial. Uh, went through and removed provisions for billing non-subscribers and delinquent taxpayers. Uh, again, at some point, people are gonna get right, and if you're within the fire district, you're gonna get the services of the fire department regardless of what your tax status is. Uh, but we did add some provisions that if we are responding as mutual aid or automatic aid outside of our fire department and we incur a loss, we break a truck, or we rip gear, or whatever the case may be, outside of the fire district, then we have the ability to go after that property owner's insurance company to help recover some of those losses we sustain operating outside of our boundaries.
Hey, Chris?
Yes, sir.
Can you go back and say?
Sure.
Um, do we need to remove the last sentence words talking about, uh, non-subscribers?
We can, yeah, so that must live by me, so the, the normal expansion to reference by state law. So we'll just update that, we'll just strike non-subscribers and we'll just leave that sentence intact.
Good.
If that's agreeable with everybody else. Uh, regarding mutual and automatic aid, going through and updating our, uh, current procedures. Right now, we're able and we do offer automatic aid or mutual aid to pretty much any fire department within Faulkner County and within reason and to the Northern Plaski County, Oak Grove, and even Long Island. Uh, so updating that assistance paragraph to reflect those changes, so. Again, we talked about before why it's very critical for us to, to be able to give and receive mutual and automatic aid because we don't have the manpower to do most of these fire grounds assignments by ourselves. So unlawful burn, uh, we've added a provision into this section that would allow the fire chief and the mayor of Mayflower to enact a burn ban under certain conditions, if it's so warranted, and in the way it states is when weather or drought conditions cause an increase in wildfire danger and Faulkner County has failed to institute a burn ban, the mayor and the fire chief will get together and decide if they want to do that. But we're not relying strictly on Faulkner County, we're not ceding our authority to the county and we're able to do that to protect our own against power.
Somebody's from some discussion.
Let's do it.
Now, on this particular one, and I've talked to Chris about this, it's, I'm not blowing it out, I mean, I promise, uh, honestly, it feels like it's, it's an undue burden to our citizens to have to go through that, two thirds of the fire district is represented outside the city limits. If the county judge puts a burn ban on the district, it's on the whole district. If this is implemented, that only puts the burn ban on.
the citizens of Mayflower, not the other two thirds of the district.
Not the border district, not the fire.
Not the fire district because they're not bound by the mayor's rule. It's, uh, they can't supersede the, the judge's ruling. I'm moved and try to add and, and I know you can pull up the data. I just looking in our city, I'd be curious to see how many of those brush fires and trash fires that get out there and a burn ban are actually in the city limits versus county. Is this rule really going to save much resources or time? Enough to make it worth it not being fair to the people in the city versus people at county, putting them under a, under a more stringent rule than, and I'm not saying, usually you're going to put one on when the judge puts one on, which makes me wonder the necessity of this particular item in place.
I don't think this is going to be a an overused, it shouldn't be an overused field. Uh, where I would disagree with, like, is, you know, it only takes one. So if we look at historically, I mean, it only takes one to burn down a bunch of houses and buildings, but I don't think this, the, how many times have you seen this over the years? That you would have done, did something different or called a burn ban before the, kind of, you.
I, I can recall one time since I arrived here in twenty twenty-one where the delay with the county was significant, significant enough to cause us some concern, but as far as having an actual run data, validate that concern and I'll have that with me tonight.
No, and I, I didn't mean to blindside you, sure.
But, you know, this is a tool and toolbox that we will probably never use, but I, I, I think as a city, you should have the option to implement one if those conditions warrant. And it's very specific on what that criteria is. It can't be an arbitrary grant. It, you, you have to be in drought conditions in order to do that.
We could always do like change that turned out to be a problem. But.
Uh, let me, let me be clear. I'm not, oh, I'm just asking the question.
Yeah.
Because on the top it likes.
Reasoning behind it.
Reasoning behind, well, it is the, as little legislation as possible. That, you know, when you start putting a hundred.
Well, this is, this is strictly subjective at the time.
It, it is, and that's.
And that's.
I'm not, I'm not trying to go back here, but again, when you say one time in the last four years, is it necessary to have it then? If there's been one time in the last four years, I know it only takes one. I, I heard your point there.
But look, look, look at some of the, some of the areas of the city where houses or mobile homes, mobile homes, especially real close together. Uh, something you can get out of hand and, and, and very quickly and can take out a whole bunch of them and I think, I think as a whole, the cities versus the county and the population of the two, I think, I think was more where we're doing, or where we're at, when they're asking.
And I guess my biggest fear on the distinction is that the confusion between the two when the burn bans posted. You see what I mean? It's kind of confused folks. Burn ban signs on the city limits, but not in the county. How does that? You know what I mean?
I think I'll think shameless that.
That's where, that's where you post the signs. The signs would only be posted at the city limits. We would go on social media and our website to say this, this ban is in effect for the city limits only. And I, I don't really foresee very many opportunities where the city and county are going to be that much disconnected.
And I'm not, no, this is great. I'm not trying to add too much discussion to this point. I just, it's things I've thought about after reading it that makes wonders if it's worth going through this.
It adds up. It's, and we can just mud in the water like we said here at the end of the night, trying to figure out how it's they call the rules slow together. Isn't really necessary.
How, how, how strongly do you feel about this?
I, I feel as a city, we should have that tool in the toolbox in case it's ever needed. And the likelihood we're going to need it, I can't speak to that, probably very little. But I don't think we should base our city's safety regarding fire danger and drought danger and cede that to the county. I think as a municipality, we should be able to enact that locally if it's so warranted. That's right. Again, it's just a tool and it's not something that hopefully we'll never even have to use. And if we do use it, most likely the county is going to be a few days behind us anyway. They're going to enact their own.
But if we were going to, to do that, before we would enact it, I would call our, the judge.
Sure.
Alan Dodson, say this is what we're thinking about. How, how soon do you think? Or do you, are you, are you even thinking about a burn ban? So that if we could be consistent and maybe we wouldn't even have to do that if, if he was going to go ahead and and to invoke, uh, a burn ban.
And that's where the check comes in.
That's right.
Look, man, I appreciate that was added because that was one of my concerns when it was just the chief, like, hold on. And I'll, you hadn't asked him to, to give power to make a rule over people to a non elected official, that, that's tyranny. And, and I'm not real level, but that's, that's.
There's definitely a big confusion.
Yeah.
If we do this within the city limits and it's not for the other, uh, I can see how it's, it would be necessary.
I'm not super passionate about this.
I understand, I understand.
Bring it out where, but it.
And again, if there's always reservations, you have the right to say, no, we're not going to do this. We're going to wait up the county.
Right. And that's what I would want to do. I would, as I said, I would want to pick up the phone call. Uh, Alan Dodson said, hey, hey, we're really dry down here. What do you think about up here? Uh, I put fire chief and fire marshal is thinking that we might need to go ahead. You know, what do you think? I would rather the tribe to condense the, the judge, county judge, go ahead and do it countywide. But, but again, uh, you know, maybe we need.
Let's keep talking. There's another point, this is coming.
Okay.
They piggyback some of that, so.
Sure. Proceeding.
Good one, this is.
All right. So the next piece is relating to the current code allows for seasonal burning, May one to September thirtieth. According to our current code, you're only allowed to burn on Tuesday, Thursday and Saturday. And that is, that, that would be quite something to enforce.
It's like, like crow season in Arkansas.
Uh, there is one. I would propose to delete all of that. If we're going to allow open burning, you're going to have open burning your own. So I don't see the reason for seasonal restrictions. Let's just delete all that language.
Mm-hmm.
Any discussion allowed?
Love it.
Great.
Do we have, I'm sorry, Chris, do we have anywhere else where it describes what is allowed to be burned?
Yes.
In this ordinance? Okay.
Yes. So the ordinance itself, and they kind of piggyback some state law, it's only not for vegetation that you're allowed to openly burn.
Yeah.
Uh, so the exceptions to the Mayflower's unlawful burning acts. This got updated a little bit to, you'll link the police department as the principal and, uh, notifier. The way our current code reads now is that you should notify the police department if you intend to openly burn. Well, the fire department typically has manned personnel staff to some degree twenty-four hours a day. Fire department should be the principal authority that you would notify if you choose to do something. This is not a requirement that you have to notify the fire department. It's just saying if, i- it's a good practice to let us know so we don't get some of the false alarms. And it just basically takes the burden off the police department and transfers that to the fire department instead of contacting the police dispatcher. Commercial burning, the mayor's office and the fire department will issue that permit. It's a no cost permit, no strings of tax, and pretty much just a, a, a a notification that you intend to burn a commercial lot. Again, this, that one is a requirement. We want to know if somebody's burning off an acre or two acres or whatever the case may be. Permit is no cost. We've talked about that city council meetings and, uh, meetings passed. No fees, no strings. This is pretty much a notification tool for us to be aware. And going back and I've, I've had a talk with, uh, Mr. Jeffries about this last piece and I've amended it from what's actually in the ordinance right now. This last paragraph, I, I'm not a fan of it. I don't know why it was even included in the ordinance. And the more I try to clean it up, it seems like the muddier it gets, to be honest with you. Uh, but there is a provision under the exceptions to unlawful burning and Mayflower code as it's written right now says that you can cook and burn outdoors for the purposes of outdoor cooking in a device designated and constructed for said purpose. So grilling and smokers and stuff like that. So the way that paragraph was written and where it was situated in the code kind of caused some confusion. So my, my suggestion to kind of clean that up was just to say this ordinance shall not require notification to the fire department nor shall it restrict burning conducted for the purposes of outdoor cooking. I think that's about as clear as I can make that.
And I like, I like the adding of the, with the designated devices. It's been burned down or whatever. I got a burn pile and I come out there and I throw a pack of hot dogs on top of it.
Yes.
Call it a grill.
Yes. So it doesn't with the stipulation that it had to be in a grill versus.
You have the correct code language.
Pack of hot dogs on acre burn. It's just a really big grill.
That's it.
One bit perfect spot about that.
Does that satisfy any of the concerns you have, Mr. Jeffries?
I think so. Obviously, we spoke about this and, and with the burn ban part, obviously there's a burn ban. There is no.
And that would be a.
Burn, right. Uh, with this part, I wasn't a hundred percent on the, and I spoke to this, yeah, if you're going to burn a big brush pile, probably let somebody know. If it's a Saturday evening at six o'clock and I'm trimming some limbs in my yard, I get a pile of limbs no bigger than wheelbarrow and it rained three days ago. I feel silly thinking I have to call the fire department to let them know that I'm going to put some lighter fluid on it and burn that that little pile of leaves or twigs. Not trying to let the cat out of the bag, but that does not say shall contact fire department. It says should contact fire department.
Well, there's not, there's not a requirement to do it. It's, it's just the best practice.
And you have a bit that I appreciate that language. And we're, you know, with our trash company and picking up limbs and stuff like that. I don't burn my house anyway. I, well, I will. I don't, I don't have to draw fire. I got some sticks or something. I'll start with the furnace because it's technically, you've got to go and cut them up in little pieces and buy, buy them all up and do all that mess. That's ridiculous.
Does, does it not say when there's a burn ban though, that you should not even be using your grill?
Depends on the order. Depends on how that order is issued from the judge.
Okay.
But now is it, is it different? That's a good point. Is it different if you're using propane on a grill versus charcoal or, or whatever, open fire? Okay. It's all the same. Okay.
Any additional discussion on that point? All right. We'll move on to the enforcement mechanism. Again, trying to update the language to have the fire department as the principal enforcement authority, but not negating the role of the police department. As soon as we have more staff than we've ever had before the fire department, there's no reason we can't tend to our own ordinances uh, that fall under our purview. Uh, additional language was added, uh, to ensure that a person would first have that opportunity to put that fire out or whatever, uh, infraction he's kind of guilty of under section two before a ticket would be issued. We're not just going to roll up to somebody's home and the first thing we're going to do is leviate a citation or a fine. That person has been given the chance to extinguish that fire or remedy that condition before enforcement action is taken. And again, it's very clear that it says no citations shall be issued or levied against a person just for open burning. That is permissible. We've, hopefully we can strike the language where it's permissible all year long. We don't have to get involved with that. We're just looking for, uh, you know, public nuisance burning, toxic smoke, hazardous materials, things that are already illegal under state law. That's where the fire police department can get on board.
And that's covered in point eight of section two there.
Yes. And again, the section C would be, if you've got so much going on that you've blocked traffic and they can't safely travel down the road or the highway, we need to be able to update that, uh, so we don't cause traffic problems. But you still have to be first given the opportunity to remedy that on your own before we get involved. So want to delete the entire paragraph, uh, referencing the state fire code. The Arkansas Fire Prevention Code now preempts all local units of government. It's the law of the land. And a local unit of government no longer has the authority to amend that code. This, this paragraph basically allows the fire chief to manipulate and amend the code as long as it's consistent with the spirit and things like that. We can't do that anymore. A F B C is the law of land, so that paragraph is obsolete. It's a big lead. And that's all I have. Any questions, comments or concerns?
With it, Andrew?
Good. Take, take the time. This is a lot of information.
Sure, it, it is.
With this, um, again, this isn't a special call meeting, so we can't vote on, but, or, or, or is everybody in, in agreement with this? That, that is the, is the next step to get with Dustin before our city council meeting and draw up some kind of overview that says, hey, this is what we're now wanting to do. Have you talked to?
I've got an overview that's already in ordinance form. It, it's, it's been basically in work for three months.
Right. But this is what Dustin would have to submit.
If he's inclined to review, then absolutely, if we can divert him.
But that's what we would be doing at the council meeting is to go through that ordinance or vote on the ordinance to adopt all of these revisions, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Any more discussion or questions on this? Chris, thank you so much.
Yes, sir.
Along water boards. I think that was illegal, wasn't it?
It was.
Waterboard?
It was what?
Oh. Never mind. Bad joke, bad joke. Okay. Next on the agenda, water board. Who was going to take the lead on that?
What's the, what was the discussion on it? This was my question. We put it on there.
I think, I think we've, in our previous meeting, we came up with, this was something that we, we have been wanting to, to establish for some time. And we just haven't gotten around to it. So I think it was one of those situations we asked Barbara to put it on here for us to talk about. Okay. Uh, what do we go, how do we go forward? Who's going to take the lead on organizing this and?
I've got a structure designed and laid out if you want to start with that.
Okay.
Hold on.
No, no, but.
Uh, with the six of us and, uh, required two members of.
Extran.
I already have one of them for sure. I know that we want to talk, because I've talked to, uh,
Yes.
Rankin.
Randy Ryan.
West, which is on the, on the very west end of our, of our water district. Uh, I talked to another gentleman on the very north end, the very north end of our water district that said he actually works for the county as a facilities and maintenance person. He's in the business. Said he would be glad to come to a quarterly meeting or whatever if we wanted to do that, take the training, uh, to be on the board to to do that. So.
Would, couldn't we go ahead, uh, and take the position that we want to go forward with water board? Uh, that we would contact Randy on an official basis and say, hey, that, that we're establishing this and the gentleman that you're talking about, uh, to, to verify that they would want to participate.
And what, what's your. Those, those out in the district have to complete that same training. Or is it only for elected officials?
Okay.
So that'd be even easier on them. They just have to come to say a quarterly meeting. It's, doesn't have to be a monthly meeting, but quarterly is what we decided is will probably be sufficient, right?
A quarterly meeting?
Yeah, unless, you know, something's kind of lucky. Just going to another random one quicker than that.
Okay. So how do we want to prove? You know, you're saying you've got an overview of this. Are you wanting to take the lead on this or how, how should we handle this?
That, that's fine. The outline of the, of the water board is essentially set up by a state act, is it six oh four? Is it? It's set up. We just have to get the two outside members.
Okay.
Because we serve us more than fifty percent outside of our municipal. We have to have those. It's my understanding, and it's been a while since I went through the training, that they don't even have to be voting members. But just a voice at the table for those people that are outside, they're, they're not, they're unrepresented. That's, that's the stance now. Uh, the scope and the nature of the discussions with the water board does, I mean, I guess they essentially send policy to the water department. So I say send policy, discuss policy.
And, and the city council has to approve that, no matter what it is for it to be implemented, correct?
Just for a recommendation.
Yeah, I, I was thinking that the water board submits recommendations to whatever.
Similar to what planning commission.
Right.
Some of the things, yes.
Okay. So you're going to take the lead on this?
Sure.
Okay. Barbara, will you? What do you need from us, Zach? Are you going to contact us after?
Contact us and if those two guys are still, and it's been a year since, probably since I thought they were there, so then what we're going to do is.
Contact us and if those two guys are still, and it's been a year since, probably since I thought they were there, that then what we're gonna do is essentially set up a date for an inaugural meeting.
I think that's what we need to do so that we get everybody in and then go, go over this and make sure that everybody's on the same page.
Is that just an overview meeting and?
Okay, so you're going to?
This is Randy, you, this is your same thing, but does that sound, the next progression?
Okay, so you're going to take the lead on this?
Yes, sir.
Barbara, will you make sure that we've got that documented?
Yes, sir.
And then we're going to be waiting to hear from you.
I'm gonna put out a letter or an email to those gentlemen and get a response and have that back to the council.
Well, but, but we could, we could go ahead and set up a meeting and, and for us, the water board, that, and get, get things began, right? Get the things started.
It, absolutely, and I'm not gonna make them do voting for another night of meetings as we meet a lot anyway.
I understand, but.
Well, I, no, but what I would like to see on that water board, the quarterly, this is just my vision. Can't imagine why you guys would be against me, but say we have a six thirty council meeting on a Tuesday night, or if the water board to meet at five thirty. While we're all here anyway, have that hour, that would be, that'd be great if those gentlemen could leave and we, or, or in the hour before workshop or whenever.
I think that would be good, but I think we'd need to have a meeting first.
Oh, sure.
You know, it may take longer than thirty minutes.
Absolutely.
Then we follow, follow into that. Okay, thank you, Zach. Okay, uh May financial review. Crystal, is that you?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Questions? Uh Dale sent us out a report today, I believe.
Right, and I couldn't print it out. My, my computer is messed up.
I didn't really get a chance to go over it much. I got it, but I didn't want to get to look at it, but if you don't have any questions, guys, spreadsheet, guys.
I do have one question. It's a simple one. I hope it's a simple question. We actually mentioned this last month, and I know you had it be out, and we think we fumbled through and figured out what it was on our own, kind of remembering some things. But now I'm seeing a discrepancy on the, in general fund, there's operating revenue, operating expense, other revenue, and other expense. And we determined that that was the payout of the street sales tax, I believe. Is that correct?
Yeah, and well, I mean, I need to see the amount, but.
Uh for, for April, which are the current numbers we got, uh the expense was forty one thousand?
Yes.
So I guess, I guess my question is, the discrepancy in those numbers of the other revenue and the other expense, shouldn't they match up perfectly? Because year to date, the other revenue is a hundred eighty five, six hundred nineteen dollars, and the other expense is two hundred two thousand, one hundred seventeen dollars. Uh roughly a seventeen thousand dollar difference in the revenue and expense. And if that's a, that's a pass there, if that's a straight in, straight out, it should.
Yeah, it should. Um during the audit, the legislative audit, um he found uh he could against the payroll reimbursements to match out of street and one percent as related to general fund, and there had been an error, a deposit error, where a fire check was deposited into one cent and a one cent check was deposited into fire. We corrected that in that month.
So in the month, wasn't that fine in April? In April, the, the month, the revenue was forty one oh three nine, the expense was forty one two two five, so it was within a hundred and fifty bucks, two hundred bucks. But the seventeen thousand on the year, I guess in my mind, and I, please don't take me, I can be wrong, but if there was a discrepancy, it should have shown up as a, as a credit earlier in the year, that when everything did direction, it would have debited that extra credited amount.
It still shouldn't, it shouldn't even out still.
And I may be oversimplifying that, Chris, right?
No, no, it's okay. I can, I mean, I'll be glad to look at it. I just need to make some notes and, and so I can try and figure it out for you. And it was on sales tax, right?
Well, it was in general fund under the other revenue and other expenses. And again, the big number was on the year-to-date, not on the monthly.
There was something we didn't, well, you said the correction was something we didn't catch the previous one.
I don't know if that, I don't, I don't know that that would be, the number you gave me, the forty one thousand, is definitely sales tax. I don't even see the other revenue. Am I looking at something different?
The first page? Isn't it on the first page?
Well.
Towards the top, like the summary page?
That's one of the very.
It's like the third and fourth line.
Okay, while you're looking that up. All right, are there any other questions while she's looking that up? Or do we move on? And then we come back to Crystal.
Everything else, Luke. Uh, Crystal, this may help you. If, if there is a, a note on here about a fifteen thousand dollar reimbursement for demo services at Jackson Avenue. Would that have been something with the street that would have caused that discrepancy in the?
It could have been, um.
Because those services were paid out in twenty four, then they probably wouldn't show up on the year-to-date for the.
Yeah, um unfortunately, um Randy would have done that. You said there's a reimbursement, right?
It's in that, that one hundred ninety six, six ninety nine number on the transfer to street, which is part of that two hundred two thousand number.
Right.
Again, this is where it gets sketchy. We've got so many transfers. I thought we were trying to limit those number of transfers, and it seems when we've got the other revenues and other expenses we've added or transfer transactions, I, I don't know.
Council's demolition?
That, that was, we, as a city council, we were demolition and we're property doing things that I haven't made up the end of. Say about two months later, we got a reimbursement on the job title and stuff that didn't run. Whether several lost the way.
But again, if that was, if the work was performed in twenty four, say, then we would have shown a debit of that amount in twenty four. Received the money in twenty five, it should have been credited in twenty five that did break, so. But as it stands now, we have a, a deficiency of seventeen thousand dollars in the transfer. That's. I'm not acting like I've got a grasp on these numbers. I'm just understanding the number.
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking.
If somebody would take it, going out live by live where that is, nine with dollars and cents, I'd be like, oh, okay, but I, I'm not seeing.
Okay, while Crystal is looking, investigating that, you, anything else?
That, that was the only, the Larry thing that stood out to me, other than, or we could sure use more revenue.
Thank you. No doubt. Okay, well, well, Crystal is looking at that. Do we wanna move on to resolution twenty twenty five dash twenty uh with Chris in terms of another property that's going to be uh condemned? Is that correct?
It's not gonna be then. We're, we're going to have the council hopefully pass a resolution to order them to clean up the property and like, so we don't have to take those necessary next steps. But if y'all are good with that, should have been in your packets for most of this stuff, uh just a brief highlight.
It was in the pictures.
All right, so Reva Circle, there's four lots. There's quite a bit of real estate on Reva. Uh I've received multiple complaints uh from neighbors and surrounding property owners regarding this property. Man, for whatever, clickers on the struggle bus tonight. We're, all right, so uh resolution to uh have the city council allow us to order the property to be uh cleaned up and abated. Uh so I went out to the property in February of this year. Mayflower PD was on scene. They were evicting, getting rid of squatters that were out. Uh the property had been vacant for quite some time. Uh everything about it, windows, doors, garage, everything was unsecured and open. Uh when we went inside, we had structural collapse. In the middle of the home, in the kitchen, trash and debris was everywhere. There was evidence of a, it appeared to be a young mother of a small child living in the shed behind the house as well. Uh fence is falling apart. They have a, probably a six foot burn pile in the back that is dry as all get out. Uh unkempt lawn, and it's just unsafe to live in. Uh according to some of the neighbors that described the vibe of property to clean it up themselves, uh they've had foundation companies out there. They won't even give them an estimate. They won't touch it. Uh they're surprised that it hasn't already fallen over. Uh but February twenty fifth, I did my normal door hangers, moved on to the yard sign a week later after no progress, no contact. Week later, sent a certified letter. I did receive the return receipt signed, uh so the property owner is aware of these violations. Uh the, the disconnect that we have here, it's an elderly woman that owns the property. The daughter is speaking on behalf of her and they own the property. And neither one of them live in the city limits, so there's nobody I can just go knock on the door and issue a summons or a citation to.
Are they, are they local or are they?
They're in Conway. I believe the, one of them is Conway. I'm not sure who is, uh one of them is a little further away. Uh but I have got a number from the neighbors. Uh we've had multiple conversations going back and forth about maintaining the property, abating it, and I've get a lot of assurances and things you can take care of. They're working towards it. They're trying to sell it. And I, I've heard a lot of different things, but ultimately, the property has not been abated. Uh the last windstorm we had, we, we got this massive hole in the ceiling, but it's covered up. I'll just rip them, rip the park tarp. Covering the roof that's blown all over the street. Um the foundation is buckling everywhere throughout the property. Uh this is this massive barn and trash fire just waiting to happen in the backyard. Uh that was going back in March. None of these things have been abated. And as we sit about a week ago, getting into growing season, the, the yard, backyard, side yard, front yard are all starting to get overgrown. Uh the property is vacant. I have asked the, the caretaker of the property to secure it, hey, so nobody can get into it anymore. And to maintain the yard and get rid of the brush pile in the back. That, that's my minimum requirement, and we're going on since the end of February, and we've had no progress. So this is where we're at, and absent these, these people not living in the city limits, my enforcement mechanism is a little limited. So I'm hoping in order from the city council and a public hearing at the next meeting, uh we'll convince them to maintain their property so we don't have to intervene.
What would you say, Art Ben? What would be the next step?
So the, a potential next step, if they don't evade anything, we would have the street department board up and secure the property.
Well, let's go back and, and reestablish for everyone, when did this start? When did you start on this? It's been some time ago.
It, so my initial contact was actually behind the property, inside the property, was back in February. And I've had numerous complaints even going prior.
To that, that's what I'm referring.
Twenty twenty four about the maintenance of the property as well.
So really, it didn't start in February. You get just the documentation that you have started that February. But it, that's why I wanted to make sure that everybody understands, this, this started long before February.
Right, yes.
This has been an ongoing issue.
Yes. So that, that's kind of a summary of, of that particular property. Uh so the next step hopefully would be a council resolution ordering that cleanup. I would let them know in the city council meeting, they would have a public hearing, they can come in and make them have their say if they do want to address the council. And if they don't do that, then we move on.
Chris, the, the elderly lady that owns it and her daughter that's basically overseeing this now, uh are they, are they acknowledging that they want to clean this up, but they don't have the, the, the means to, or what, what is their expectation?
Their, my understanding is they're severely upside down on this loan. And given the structural disrepair of the property, they can't afford to fix it, they can't afford to flip it, and they can't afford to sell it to bring it up to code to even sell it. So they're just kind of stuck with it. So they've moved elsewhere. This has been abandoned for quite some time. And so it's just sitting here rotting essentially. And I, I feel like until we force somebody's hand to clean it up, it's gonna continue to be so.
When you say abandoned.
There's no way.
If, if, if I have a rental property and I abandon that, then my rights as a owner is somewhat in conflict.
That's my terminology, but it's not theirs.
Okay, okay.
So they have tried, they, the house has actually been for sale by owner for a while. Uh to, but given the condition of the property, obviously, they're gonna have, nobody's gonna give them a loan on the property or anything like that, so. I've had uh telephone complaints, written complaints, emails, and police department involvement on the property. Something needs to be done with it. Again, it's four lots, a lot of real estate.
So is there a, a mortgage? There's a?
Yeah.
What are you talking about?
Yeah.
But they were severely upside down.
And you can't get the mortgage company, I guess.
We're not at that point in state, you know, as far as I can.
It hasn't been foreclosed.
Correct. They're, they're still current with it. They just can't get rid of it.
The mortgage company will not do anything.
Basically, essentially, at this point, you just need a resolution.
Yes.
Council wrote stating they need to clean it up. After that, they had about thirty days to take action on it, or then we move forward with action to actually do something.
Yes.
So a resolution will be voted on, should it be passed in this May meeting. If nothing's done by the June meeting, then we would have another resolution on, so take further steps to the city to remedy it and go forward with leads and whatnot.
So they would be mailed a copy of this notification, certified letter, so they would be aware. Public hearing would be held, so.
Do that. Was, was another property wrote this?
Yes, I was gonna make sure we, we were good with Reva before.
Well, let's make the resolution on there. I'll make the resolution if we adopt uh twenty, uh twenty five twenty Reva Circle.
Well, I don't think we wrote off the mark.
Yeah, we can.
Okay, okay. You can't get them cleaned up fast enough for me.
Well, I agree.
We just get a consensus.
Okay.
Trying to get ahead of it.
That's what I'm saying. Are we all, if we go forward, when you go forward with Justin, if he can get something by our council meetings.
I feel like there's, there's a bunch of these that probably needs to be done along the way.
Yes, sir.
I don't think they all warrant a fee.
I agree.
While we all understand what we're dealing with.
It's been two Reva Circle.
So any questions on Reva? I can move on to the next one on Jackson. So this property is, it's a, it's a model home all the way at the end of Jackson. It's been vacant as well. And really long time I need to come before the council, before the types of resolutions, when we have absent owners that aren't in the city limits. Most of the properties are property for you. Nobody's there to take care of when they call the disrepair. This one is the same exact type of situation. Uh I dealt with this property on and off in twenty twenty four. We finally got the abandoned vehicles and the grass and everything off the property. Visited it again uh back in March and saw they were remodeling, gutting, have plumbers. They were going through the property. You had no permits or anything pulled for this, so I stopped and tried to figure out what was going on. Um posted a door hanger, yard sign, sent a certified letter to the owner. They're aware of the conditions now. Some of the issues have been abated, but they were, they're taking their time. So to preempt some of this, given the, the rather lengthy thirty to sixty day clock we have on some of this, I'm gonna go ahead and get this process started. Hopefully, they will evade it and this won't even have to be talked about next meeting. Uh but I want that process started, so did the door hanger, certified letter, public posting. Uh when I went back on four fourteen, they hadn't had their property for sale or rent. Finally got a hold of a good contact number, reached out to them by phone to let them know what was going on. They started moving a little better, uh but we still have a lot of work to do. Uh some of the stuff we saw just back in March, burning trade waste, and they had bathtubs and carpets and rugs and everything out in the front yard. And they have a dock from an inlet from the lake that's, I condemned, that needs to be poured down. Uh you can push your finger through it. They've got doors, just trade waste and, and stuff that's in the front yard that doesn't have any business there. So they have been starting to abate this, but they've had plenty of notice and we're still behind, so. That's all I have on Jackson. Any questions on that property?
But again, four facts, just to be clear. For the property on Jackson, what are you asking for?
A resolution for the city council to order the cleanup to be compliant with the Mayflower Venus code.
Well, let me ask you a quick question. I'm like, Mark, we already have ordinances on, on our book, right? In terms of how property should be maintained within the, the city. Don't we already have this covered, that that is something that's? Don't we already have this covered that that is something that the city council, the city is requiring?
Yes, but by, by enforcement, since these are vacant properties and they don't reside in the city, I'm not bringing this to you. And I can't, I can't travel into Conway and issue a citation or something or anything like that.
Okay, so again, just clarify, when you come to us with something like this, the code's already been broken. It's, it's because the, the owners are not local.
Yeah.
Okay.
Or responding.
Or vacant.
And we're sending them a love letter. That's exactly what we're doing.
Okay. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you, Chris.
I sent Dale a message. See if he had any idea. And he said he checked it. We're, we're sending it out today, but he didn't check it for smaller areas. So he wanted to look and let us know. And as far as the, um, codes, the, the. They did have the codes for hotels and roomy houses and things like that. They. It's not on any of ours. I mean, it's not, I don't know. Would we have to add that? Something we would have to request from D M A to have it added. But it's, uh, it's out there. It's just we don't have it.
So we're not collecting that.
We passed it. We just didn't pass the information to the state so they could.
Perhaps, yeah.
We'd have to set up a commission to do that. There's something about having a commission or maybe I can oversee that.
You were talking about the A and P?
Yes.
You don't take a lead on that? You're gonna let it snow, Zayn?
I'll drop it into A I.
All right, thank you. Okay. Let's see what's on the agenda. All right, uh, resolution, we've already went through resolutions twenty-five dash twenty, twenty-five dash twenty-one and ordinance twenty-five dash X X. Is that correct, Chris?
Sure.
Yeah.
That's the next one. This should be my last time up here.
Okay.
Uh, the last, uh, meeting we had Tuesday regarding zoning, uh, we did take some action with an emergency. Meeting and an ordinance that was adopted to remedy some of the zoning conflicts we do have in the city. Um, side effect of this, we, we kept everything in the heart of Mayflower intact. The problem that we now are going to face is the heart of Mayflower and the Creekside and Interstate Drive zones. Mandate a forty foot wide maximum lot width for site built homes. Our current city code sixty feet.
Sixty.
So in order to reconcile that, we need to amend that code. And that is what we propose to do. But for those that don't know, the Creekside zone is very narrow. It's a very small piece of real estate. It's a green shade. It's bounded by the railroad tracks, pretty much the back of the border department bullpen, Black Hawk molding all the way to Shant Square. Not a lot of real estate we're talking about here. Not a lot of access to the unavailable land. So, uh, it is what it is. Interstate Drive, we're all familiar with that piece of property, uh, everything that is pretty much to the east of Interstate forty. Bounded by our city limits, uh, from the north to the south. Uh, at the current model, there's only four homes that are in that overlay that are site built on. So the proposal would be to amend. Mayflowers, uh, excuse me, the heart of Mayflowers zoning ordinance to strike the forty foot maximum or, or excuse me, yes, the forty foot maximum requirement. Replace that with a sixty foot more greater to be consistent with the rest of our city code. So. Problem. I like it.
Yep, yes. And we also mentioned that if somebody wanted to come in here and say they have X number of acres and they wanted to build patio homes or zero lot line. Then they could come to the planning commission and reduce that or ask for a reduction. Uh, less than sixty.
Essentially a rezoning for.
Exactly. That's what I'm saying. So we're not, we're not saying it'll never happen. It's got to be handled in the right way.
We're just putting some guardrails.
Exactly.
Any kind of reduction would not be allowed by our law until it goes through review process.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
All right, next on the agenda, R F P. Is that, uh? Zach?
Yeah, so. Things are moving.
Thank you.
We had one that I don't know of, uh, proposal coming in that. Obviously we can review whenever we'll get another, that wasn't exactly, when I said wasn't exact, it wasn't really anything what we had put out in the request. I actually had a Zoom call with a company. Last, last week, earlier this week, trying to run together now, um, that's actually putting together what I feel will be a quality proposal.
That's when you said it was out of state.
Yes, yes. Uh, in fact, just emailed her back an answer to a question about, you know, about the request. For this meeting. I think they're gonna have a, they, they plan to have a proposal submitted to us by middle of next week of late. We haven't had a great deal of interest expressed from anyone. Uh, I think I mentioned Tuesday night, I'm, because we were allowed to do so, I'm actually about to solicit, uh. Some proposals from different companies that are local that do that sort of thing. I'll actually call them and be like, hey. You've seen this request, but really like for you to look at this and submit a proposal to us if you would, that will give us options to consider in the next month or two.
But as of right now, we've only got this one that you spoke to.
As of right now, we don't really have any.
No, but what I mean is there was some interest in them asking questions. Is that correct?
Oh, they, they assured me that with, they, I sent Barbara some kind of. Procedure, but not procedure, but technical questions. And then, uh, I answered some kind of scope questions for them based on what we wrote in the proposal itself that they wanted to. I was encouraged that they wanted to dig a little deeper beyond what was in the actual proposal. Uh, for clarification on things. So I, I feel like it's going to be a quality proposal. Uh, I, I don't know that I'm not writing.
Right, I understand.
Again, you're gonna solicit a few more because I like options. So.
Is that still being, um, what we agreed to in terms of?
Chris, is that still on the bulletin board?
It, it, it shouldn't be. I was looking at the website. It's been downloaded two hundred and thirty times.
Really? So there's somebody.
We've got one.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, thank you, Zach. Uh. Antonio, next on our agenda, Antonio Jamerson.
Hi, uh, Donald.
Yeah.
All right. Hey, this is my, this is my teammate, Miss Sylvia Gavi. Uh, we met back in twenty fourteen. We worked at, uh, on a research with University of Arkansas, worked, uh, with one thousand youth with disability across Arkansas. And then we brought us together here in Mayflower with the after school program that we started. Uh, we just, well, we need you at the city council help, community help. Uh, we was awarded, uh, three years, we finishing up our third year, right? Uh, we had a, a funding called Yes Sir. You know, that was to help kids through, uh, COVID with the education. Uh, but last year we, we received a twenty-first century community learning center funding. It's a five year funding. Uh, and, uh, we are in partnership with the Arkansas Department of Education. Uh, so, uh, two things that we wanted to speak to you about, uh, back in October, uh, of last year, I spoke to, uh, Miss Jean Noble. Uh, she's the director over the community, uh, of block grants and, uh, she, she, uh, she let me, we probably spoke to her about three or four, five times. And, uh, they have a funding coming up, uh, due in October. And, and we think that'd be a good idea if the city could take up having a, a youth, uh, uh, center for the kids. Uh, you know, cause like right now I know we have Yorn down the road, uh, and we all, we've been located for three years with our kids inside the storm shelter. And, uh, I don't know, uh, little kid asks us, we have no windows. And the kids, you know, they there and they learning. And we feel like we've been impactful for those three years. We, we, we have worked with over a hundred plus kids. Um, and, uh, and I just wanted to just propose that no people be upset by senior citizen building. I think that's be a good thing to add on. And I think it's a five hundred thousand dollar, uh, uh, community block grant. Uh, Ms. Noble advised that, uh, you know, the city, the city or the county owner wants to apply for it. They, uh, they, she said that the people in Lono, I don't know the agency, I forgot it offhand, that, that could help us. And I think, uh, Ms. Nova also, she, she was, uh, uh, working when the senior citizen center had got funded and the public library. So and I just wanted to throw that out there, you know, cause, uh, uh, I think the kids of Mayflower deserve something, you know, a youth center. Um, and then the second thing, uh, I, us ourselves would love to rent out the senior citizen center for probably two days. Right now, we, we pay between seven hundred and eleven hundred dollars a, a month for the storm shelter. And then we can't stay sustainable like that, uh, teaching kids, you know, we only in that building for, uh, nine hours a week.
We're also licensed to this state of Arkansas as a childcare provider and we're working with kids with disabilities. We've gotten, uh. Expectance from them to have at least thirty kids.
And you guys, you guys are a registered nonprofit, right?
Yes, sir. Five one one C three. Yes, sir. So, uh, yes, sir. And, uh, yeah, as you said, we, we, we licensed through the state. Uh, we have about, uh, three or four advisors project. Uh, we also in partnership with the Arkansas Department of Health, we received an award from them last year. Cause we travel around the state, take, uh, uh, we help kids with sleep quality. And, uh, but we, those, those two things we really, uh, would like, uh, to, uh, you know, in the fall. And this just will be from August to May, you know, any two days, you know, uh, uh, we won't play in there. We still have to probably rent out the gym that the kids play. But I, but our program is just to give kids a unique, uh, experience like tonight. Uh, we did a person, I call little rock, come and teaching the kids how to code. Uh, U C A, uh, uh, sent a Spanish, uh, young lady, teach the kids how to, uh, you know, you know, Spanish. And so, so the kids, they want to learn. So once we say, hey, cut off, talk, hey, it's time to work. They ready to work. We was off in here on Monday night, uh, we, uh, we created, uh, uh, eleven authors two years ago. And, uh, and within the next five weeks, it's gonna be nine more young people. And we let them do it. Young lady traveled from behind them. So we just want to, want, want, want to partner with the city, uh, you know, cause we, I, I funded, you know, we finishing up the, this one year. Then we have four more and, uh, and me and my friend, we getting tired. So every day when we come into the storm shelter, we had to set up, tear down and, uh, and, uh, we, we have insurance. Um, we just need two days, you know, uh, and.
When, when we say we have authors in Mayflowers, the kids that are, you know, being assisted are writing their own books and these books are on Amazon.
So if they're, if, if they're a registered nonprofit, as the city, can we not just provide them the facility to use? Twice a week with these kids? I mean.
What, what are our obligations? We already have a contract with the church and, uh, senior citizens with the Robs.
So the church is, uh, Sunday morning and then one evening throughout the week. In the past year, I think we've exercised that one evening throughout the week twice. And if there was something already set up, speaking as a member of the church, um, if there was something already set up. With their organization, we would just choose a different day. We wouldn't, if there was something there, especially something like this with kids.
And you have a pretty much set day of the week, we, we grab.
Uh, so the first year we, we, we did Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. Last year we did Tuesday, Wednesday. This year we did Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, but, but we want to slack it down, back down to that.
I worry about your good health, right?
Yeah, so, uh, so, uh.
The church would work around their schedule. We wouldn't have any issues with that.
Can I, you read your email the other day and kind of did some digging and I don't know the answer to this. And I don't remember the lady, the person's name, but Jean. Uh, those community development law grants, just doing a little surface digging. I'm not certain that Mayflower is eligible for that grant.
So, so that's what she talked to us about. That's why she was gonna send us to Lono. I mean, send the city to Lono. And it's an agency down there that gonna do all that, you know, but, you know, for the city.
But, but I mean, just on the surface, to be eligible for those grants, you have to be at fifty-one percent of your population of. As L and I load of water. Based on the current statistics, our, our city's kind of broken into two zones, the way they zone those. And one of those zones, I was just pulling up, one's at forty-seven percent. Um, and the other is, that's the forty-seven percent.
Absolutely. That, that, that's why she, uh, gonna send us to Lono like I, like I, uh, funded that we have with, uh, um. Uh, with the twenty-first century, uh, you know, the grant writers, you know, uh, could, you know, uh, could, uh, take care of that part. Like, like I, uh, program, uh, I think eighty percent is on free lunch, you know? Uh, and on the property though, you know, and like, uh, majority of our kids, um, um, they, uh, they knew their grandma or their grand or their dad. So, yeah, yeah. So, so then, then, yeah, so, but I understand what you're saying.
Well, and I'm, and I'm not trying to.
Right, right, right. Yes, sir.
But I just, looking at that preliminarily, right, again, Mayflower split in two sections that kind of splits on the freeway. The west side is at thirty-three point one percent low to moderate. And the east side is at like forty-seven percent, neither being above fifty-one.
Yes.
Oh, how would we be eligible or not? As a population eligible.
Now we're talking about as far as this grant to.
Yes. To, my understanding, to a part of the, um, the C N D B G, the community development law grant, your, your area. Your has to, has to fall under the criteria of fifty-one percent or greater.
And we don't have that.
We're not there.
Now, we're, we're a.
Right, right. That's why Miss Jean said, uh, the, the people at Lono, they know how to, uh, find our data that we have. You know, like I, like, like I, like I funded, uh. Yeah, it was same criteria, but, but the kids that's in our program, like eighty percent of, of the poverty. And, uh, you know, we have a high percentage.
We're talking about, talking about apples and oranges. We're talking about as far as a grant and the standing that we would, uh, that labels Mayflower. We've already been through this. We've already had a conversation on this about two weeks ago for a, a program within the city that was very important. And we were shot down because we are over that. As a matter of fact, we're above Conway in terms of per capita. So we don't, we don't qualify for any of that.
And I think we sat down, I'm not trying to. They, so they may be able to break it down with the beneficiaries of such a grant. Instead of just the area where the beneficiaries of that grant, if they follow that demographic, I don't know. This outside my wheelhouse. I, I don't know, but something will get you.
She, yeah, she says she, there's nothing that's promising, but you know, it's somebody in Lono that, you know, it had, you know, people there that, uh, you know, wants to.
That's a support group for, for. And they're, and they're actually good.
Yes, absolutely. I, yeah, yeah, that's, that's.
But, but let's go back to you are, that's, that's one of the issues that you were told when you talked about that. The second, the second, uh, is your question was that you, that you proposed was renting the, uh, the community center.
Yes, sir.
And the, that, does, does anybody have questions about that? In terms of the use of, of, and how this would, how many, how many, uh, people did you say that would, would be in this group?
So, uh, so first, what we had to do is before we do anything, we had to call our D H, uh, well, she's not a D H S no more. She's, she's up under the Office of Childhood through the Department of Education, Miss Megan Whitehurst. And I had to call Miss Jessica. She's out of Oklahoma. Uh, they had to come over here and just measure and then they'll be able to tell us how many kids we could have. We still thinking that it'll be thirty. And then they'll be able to tell us how many kids we could have. We still thinking that it'll be thirty. Yeah, you know, so all we got, you know, so with the space at the uh storm shelter, that's all we can have, okay? We can call.
So they have a criteria of how many kids you have in certain size of city.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And uh yes, sir. And then everybody work with us, FBI check and child care and all that. And so, uh yes, sir. So so I think that it should have been still thirty. And then we even hire somebody to uh come and clean up behind us, and I know the seniors, you know, probably be upset. But uh but uh I know we'll we'll do the place right and, you know.
In terms of the the renting, you you mentioned a while ago that you were renting the school for somewhere between seven hundred and eleven hundred dollars.
We paid. Yeah, we paid. A day.
When you and I were talking, you you said that that had to come way on down to like four hundred dollars a month, am I correct?
Well, you know, just uh we we feel like since we are helping kids out, uh and we off in the building uh nine hours a week. And we are part of the Department of Education. So uh uh I advise kind of want us to, you know, still keep an open communication, but kind of move away. And uh go and do our own thing, but you know, we in a, you know, a, you know, a low resource area, you know, so. And we don't, we just want to stay here and help the kids out. And uh so like, but right now, we have, we have more people on the waiting list than we have in our program. And uh so uh so uh I really, I really, I don't know how to handle that though. But I I tell some parent, we can come and do a little mentorship, but uh but the program is picking up.
But but in terms of, so that we can be clear.
Yes, sir.
The the hours you were talking about, you said roughly two hours?
Uh so uh so two days, we we would like to have between four and seven, you know, yeah, four and seven, you know, we.
Oh, four P M.
Four P M to seven P M. Yes, sir.
So uh and just look, executive day, days better, the days of the week, but you want to keep a Tuesday, Wednesday, Tuesday, Thursday, Wednesday, Thursday.
So it, Tuesday, Tuesday and Wednesday, probably.
Wednesday.
Or Tuesday.
We already have somebody coming in.
That was my question, that's why I was asking.
Yes, we already have someone coming in before seven o'clock, that they start their program at seven, and they've been there for for a year.
Is it seven or six? You're talking about recovery?
Seven.
Seven?
It could be uh Tuesday, Thursday, we open.
Thursday, though, is when uh we're that one day for uh new life.
But we can work around it.
And that would be something to be discussed. How how much longer with your program, Mr. Jameson? Do you have a contract with the school or an agreement with the school? Like how quickly you need to move like a rental for this?
Uh well, the contract open, uh well, it's in May twenty-fifth.
And your program being sold at the end of the school year as well. At least you've been kicking off with a twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
Yes, sir. And yeah, we gonna do a, we gonna do a solid count, you know, it's just gonna be one week. But you know, that's over now, we signed it today, we'll do it one week in June, one week in July.
We've got to kind of work out logistics on.
But again, but again, what you were talking about, between four and seven, so you're wanting three hours?
Yeah.
Well, I thought you said two hours.
No.
Two days.
Two days.
Two days.
Two days per week.
Set up.
Three hours per day.
Yeah, who cleaned up?
Uh, yeah, family, we do, we'll hire somebody, you know. So yes, sir. So uh so I'm I my plan, if we if we uh bless uh be over there. My plan is when we pick up the kids, we'll let them go play in the gym. Then they know five o'clock, teachers come in, teachers come in at five to six. And uh so at six o'clock, you know, most of them getting ready to leave, and some of them, like today, if it's warm, they want to go back to the park or something. And then, you know, but uh that's how we'll we'll do it. They they kind of know when to sit down and and when to uh calm down and everything. But but five, between five P M to six, we have uh two certified teachers coming in. They are, you know, so so they they be excited about this.
I think these programs.
Last thing about, um again, I mentioned, or you had mentioned that you you were paying seven to eleven hundred dollars.
Yes, sir.
Okay, what are you wanting to, that you said you would like for us to accept?
Just a, just a good price, uh we, so 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 we do get something called uh indirect costs. And so uh so 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 it's a sub grant. So yeah, we was in debt last year, but CPA said we gotta do a little better. Uh cause the first and last year, we was, we was, we was, me and her just putting back to purchase a a hot plate and food for the kids. But now, uh nonprofit out of Little Rock, uh British Success come and feed the kids. So that that's a relief for us. So uh so uh uh yeah, just just, you know, we just feel like eleven hundred and just a little screen, you know, uh for nine hours.
Can we uh, this is, and I'm interested, and I thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
But uh this is May, see, you're gonna need it, you're not gonna need it for the next month, you've already paid for that, right?
Uh, you don't want to start a storm shelter.
Right.
Would it be starting in August or September?
Can you do me a favor?
Yes, sir.
Uh if if it's okay with everybody, give us a chance to to look at it and discuss it. And then we'll we'll get you back up here and then we'll we'll, it's all news to me. I mean, I talked to you, they were emailing, but now we've got the detail, but I'd like to think about it and absorb it. And let's and let's let it soak in and kind of kind of make sure that we're doing the right thing that works for everybody.
That's sound good.
And I appreciate you coming.
I will, I will say that, I mean, in 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 college, I studied a lot of these programs, and they have a tremendous effect on the children and their and their outcomes, especially when you talk about disadvantaged, low-income children. Having a program like this does end up showing statistically a a good outcome. And in our community, we hear all the time that we need things for our kids, because our kids don't have anything to do. And we have someone local doing actual programming with the kids. So I mean, I'll I'll just say, I I I really like this program. And as as a city, I think that it would behoove us to support these these types of organizations, like like Mr. Jameson's in Yarn.
I very much agree. But this is all brand new.
Sure. Yeah, 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 we'll discuss it for sure. Yeah, yeah.
I want you to leave encouraged that we're gonna make something work.
Yeah, that's why I said what I wanted to, because I wanted him to, I wanted him to feel encouraged in that, because I do love this program.
Numbers, I'm not settling on anything, and I'm sure we can make the numbers work on. I'm not trying to throw anyone else under some total discouragement that the school district could benefit, it's wouldn't.
I know.
Uh be.
Brother Mark, and we don't want to get in no trouble.
Hey, it's open, open market. He found a better deal.
One last thing, one last thing. Did you state, out of his thirty kids, are all thirty of these kids from the Mayflower area?
So so right now, we we do have two kids that got discharged. They are from Bologna, but they haven't been here in about three weeks. So we just gonna set them up, uh mentoring with them. So we 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 calling new parents now.
No, I'm not trying to put anybody down. When you're talking about Mayflower, so I I'm assuming that ninety-eight percent of this thirty uh kids are from, are from the Mayflower area.
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's all I was asking. I just wanted to clarify that. Yeah, okay.
We're going, going to be a hundred though, so.
Right, I understand, I understand. But again, thank you so much, Antonio. You know, we've been, we've been at this for a long time. And Antonio does a fantastic job, not only in this, but everything in the community, and we really appreciate him.
Yes, sir. I thank y'all for having us, and Brother Mark and everyone, and thank you, Ms. Madison. And uh hey, but but anything y'all need, we could, we could turn.
We'll get back.
And we'll be transparent with our budget and everything.
Sure.
All right.
So he's got thirty-five kids, you say?
Yeah.
But they all from this community.
Yeah, yeah, all here, so yeah, so.
Well, they have two that's out of the community, and part of the reason that they're not showing up is because transportation issues. So we're gonna have to discharge them pretty hard.
And.
I don't think it's a mouthful. Yeah, I like them, I'm gonna do everything I can. I was just curious of how we can part of this to get. There are people to tell you how many you could have in the.
Yeah, ah, yes, sir.
How we need to.
What do you need to start with steps? But if if I mean.
Uh if if you all said, if you all said we can come over here, uh uh our D H S lady, her name is Megan Whitehurst, so she new to us. And she, then she had just come. Lady probably want to meet you.
Right, right. Let me talk about that. One other thing that you, I I think just kind of was worth, y'all have insurance on these kids?
Yes, sir.
In terms of uh if anything gets damaged or whatever for. I just want to make sure that everybody understands.
Thanks, I had to just a little bit to that. So part of the reason I've not started to rent that facility out to anybody at this point is we've confirmed through the municipal league that the property is insured just the building and contents. But there are no provisions for personal liability.
Right.
So until we got Dustin on board to facilitate some kind of waiver or determine what the city's liability is for anybody entering that facility under a private rental agreement.
That's why I brought it up. That's why I brought it up.
That has to happen first. And so I just want to be sure that the city's not being allowed any child concern.
That's gonna be done, that's gonna be done soon.
And I've talked to Antonio about that. That's why I wanted to bring it up, because he already has has a jury and can, I think you said you can verify or provide us documentation with that policy.
Yes, sir.
You know, with that, and I think that's going to be part of.
I checked the municipal league and and that was the answer that they gave.
Yes, yes.
Okay, I think there's a lot of steps, brother.
Yes.
Encourage that we can make something work.
Hey, well, I thank you all, you all.
Thank you, thank you for what you do.
Yes.
Uh there's a lot of people live their lives and don't take time to to be to be in the detail like you guys, and I appreciate you.
Yes, sir. Yeah, thank you.
Antonio does a fantastic.
Hey, y'all helped in that.
Thank you so much. Uh next one, the gentleman, Raymond.
Long winded man.
He's too tired to talk to you. All right, Raymond, you've already used three minutes, get enough of you.
Y'all need to start taking the bathroom, trying to find another replacement for me. My time is getting short. I've got about a year and six months. So when you know, who will be leaving in in about eighteen months.
Thanksgiving of twenty-six.
Water and wastewater, superintendents, tunnel inspector, cross connection program coordinator, and whatever other house's hats I wear, um trying to find them persons.
Raymond, I'm not trying to catch up. How uh, because obviously with that kind of undertaking, we're gonna need someone to come alongside you and.
Shadow. Now, this transfer?
How long, which obviously depends on the person that's hired, but how long of a transition period would you anticipate that we would be? Six months, three months?
I was gonna say a year.
A year.
Don't forget any months.
Let me also mention something, uh Chris is not interested.
Well, that was gonna be my next question, but I'm gonna ask a personnel issue, and is there anybody with the department now that would be willing or capable with the certifications to step up and?
But with that, Raymond, do you know of anybody?
Tell you what, it's gonna be a very hard position to fit, because there's a whole lot of stuff.
Throw it on Indeed and LinkedIn.
Oregon here has already have jobs, you know, and they're staying there until they retire. Not unless you just have in the room called somebody, and it's gonna have to be advertised statewide, not just locally.
Mm-hmm.
And hoping that person will, you know, move into this area and accept it. Uh that person will probably want a little bit more than what I have.
I had this conversation with someone just today, that whenever you leave, we're probably not gonna be able to replace all the certifications we have to have.
Well, not only that, you know, I I would never feel like I need an assistant. Probably should have, where it could have stayed on track and stayed on top of things a little bit better. And I guarantee this other person will want that.
They'll probably, they'll probably need it just because of the the tribal knowledge that you have of everything right here.
Yeah, it's, there's gonna be a lot there to learn, and a lot to understand with the city council, and like the operation and all.
It's been treated.
Then they need to be in this position at the least about a year, eight months to a year, you know, get a good handle. The other thing is, I am one of the inspectors here. The only one you'll have is Chris, if he stays home. I'm assuming Chris will stay home. I don't know how much longer, but he leaves, you you will not have a plumber inspector.
I'm not, I'm not looking for letter resignation tomorrow or anything. And this is part of the mayor's, I'll step down here, but do you have or can you put together a list of certifications and things that are needed so that we can begin to put out feelers and?
I will, I will start working on that, trying to get something put together for you.
That would help in writing a job description if we do.
As well as though we can start looking at our talent pool essentially and.
Right.
Well, appreciate you, Sid Lane.
I just want to bring it to the other team teams, you know.
Well, we appreciate getting a year and a half notice.
Head on the game here.
Yeah, we appreciate that, instead of, you know, no notice and so to say.
You know, I talked to the other person of the day, I had bought it, you know, and uh he said, that's gonna be a hard one to field. I said, yeah, because there's not a lot of stuff.
Right.
They still have their certification or anything, be like standing this type of business.
I would imagine they'd need some sort of subject matter knowledge about, you know, I mean, some of our equipment's kind of old. You know, if somebody came in from a brand-new system, they might not know how to use, and they're like, trying to use a rotary phone, they just stand there and look at it.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I feel like, you know, a person probably needs at least ten or five, ten years' experience in in management, supervision. Being a sibling thing, uh to have, you know, I think that person probably could pick up on things a little bit quicker and faster, you know. I would hope like bringing somebody in that just hadn't been in that field, you know, very long. May may have the certifications of of a license, you know, but not been in that position or OTJ.
Uh, I appreciate that. Is there anything else you need to tell us about everything else working good? How are our service, I know we license, we had that, we were dealing with.
Yeah, uh pump station, we ran into a hiccup there when I worded that that pump, you know, I gave them a serial number for that pump. And they sent me their way to the pump. Which the only thing about that is just chasing out the flu, you know. So I had to get back with them about uh about that, and we ended up uh gotten the police, the police out of the pump station here and maybe some other stuff there. Got back to them yesterday, and I'm hoping we can get that resolved by next week and get that pump put back in, get that pump concerned.
Is that at the station about there, about, if our motive will that back up on business, like it's bombastic?
Yeah, well, we we had a good, you said, you know, I hadn't had a need to at this point in time. Fortunately, we, you know, our rain wall has been through my neck so far. The other issue we ran across is is um where the pump, the tank up here and the inspection on it, we're having to delay that. Um the D F Bs that we have there at that boost to pump station are not smart. D F Bs, they're not soft ramping and soft start, soft ramping and soft shutting down. So we're having to change those V F Bs down, we have to put that to a system on a pressure mode. Uh, and then, my understanding, when we had that system put in, it was capable of doing that.
You, you all understand what he's talking about, it's a hard, hard start.
Or it's not a, a hard start.
It's a, it's a variable speed, basically, it's a variable speed drive. It's almost like your car, when you start off.
A little bit, you have a little bit.
You, you ramp up, that's right. But that's a good thing, because it keeps the demand down. If it's a hard start, you've got an inrush current that throws that demand up quite high. And you're, we're billed on demand and K W H, so we want that soft start.
Yeah, um, so we got those ordered today, um, the, uh, the next gen, I've had a convoy, that'll be, if he's ordered today, and hopefully get them in by next week possibly. And it may not be a, be a delay, but uh, there may be two, three days delay or a week of delay. Uh, they're supposed to start the tank inspections Monday. So, uh.
Is there, is there a sweep of that?
Wanted to be too, but.
Is there anything I'm missing, or is this, you just ready to retire?
Yeah, I'm ready to retire, yeah. I'm, I'm pretty much burnt.
Yeah.
Well, one of the things.
I'm on the damn slope. I'm gonna go, I'm gonna go.
Trying to go out of sense, light comes back up, is that what you're trying to do, get into a copy?
Thirty years I've got, and was here thirty-nine, almost eighty years of it.
Well, I want to say, just like with Mark, thank you so much, you, you've done a lot, and you do a lot every day. And so I didn't want you to, to sit down without us recognizing, thank you so much.
Oh, you're welcome.
And you're, you're exactly right, one of the things to take away from this, this is not going to be an easy position to, to, to fill.
Right.
We've got a, we've got, we've got to, we've got to look raw, as you say, so, thank you though, that.
Oh, yeah, well, thank you, brother, you're welcome, thank you.
Again, thank you for all you did, thank you, we appreciate you.
So for the next while, you're gonna start kind of prepping your position, and prepping the job, and prep the job description and all that down, so.
Yeah.
It's gonna be a big, it's gonna be a big step.
Yeah.
I had always understood you, but I know you've got the right heart for the, for what you're trying to do, and I know you're purpose and your intention is correct. And uh, thank you a lot, so.
Thank you.
Alrighty.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Reverend.
We appreciate you. Yes. Start tonight.
Two more, two more quick things.
Okay.
One is, is they've asked, they've asked, people ask us for our information on how to get hold of us, phone numbers or, or, or email addresses, and they're not anywhere on the web now, okay? So, do we wanna put that, it's up to you guys, do you wanna put your phone number and your email address available?
For six years.
We, municipal league lists public signs every year.
It's not on website.
Let me get you that website.
And I probably liked it, since we got away from the, the city provided email, the private email, that's, that's the decision that y'all have to make.
Feel free to put my phone number on, myself on it from there.
Yeah, and, and gentlemen, if you're like me, you probably need another email account like you need another hole in your head, cause I've got another.
Yeah, but probably should set one up just for us.
Same with my recommendation is on a Google suite, any one of us could literally go in, what we're going to set up for all six, instead of paying the state, we're paying for some security email, but you could do Larry H.
At Mayflower City Council.
Dot Mayflower City Council at gmail dot com. And same thing, same thing, where we've got kind of a uniformed email, that's a Gmail account that's not.
That's a good idea.
Dimbling in your person, that way if something gets voided or whatever, you can turn over that city account that's not a city account.
We did that with church mine in Michigan, we set it up.
Before too.
Yeah.
It cannot make sense.
Good. Yeah, and things will get missed, cause I, I mean, I get so much email.
Yeah.
And, and I have five different.
Uh, I like group emails saying this is a good idea.
You wanna set you up an email account, I'll set it up, but you said you wanted to be uniform, correct?
Well, I think it's easier that way. And if, if you ask that us, and then we go all do it on ourself, then it's not gonna be uniform. So again, that's what I like you to do, somebody has sent something, said, hey, this is what I recommend.
Yeah.
Mark, at whatever, whatever, we'll all kind of set it up that way, if we have any questions.
I'll, I'll take, I'll take that one, you've taken a couple already, so.
It's on May, it's on May.
Yes.
So we, we started as a matter of cost savings, migrating away from D I S, and establishing our own Microsoft tenant internally within the city Mayflower. That's something that's very much in the works right now, with Chief Hunter, the I T guy. Uh, to establish our own city emails, I think we can do this for about five or six dollars a month for each of you guys versus the fifty or whatever we were paying prior. And this would allow communication, not only just email communication, but access, we're gonna basically have an internal site where the council agendas and all this stuff can be protected and published internally amongst yourselves. Uh, it, it's just a thought, but you would have the mayflower AR dot gov domain name attached to that, and we have some, a dot gov basically for a fraction of the price that we were paying.
And if we're all on that same tenant, then we can, we would have like a OneDrive where we could all share documents in one place without having to email, we just drop them into that folder and then everybody has that.
So they all got, is that, that's the security measures that the?
No, so that, that's part of the reason we've achieved, making sure the security requirements are satisfied, required, potentially, and everything that they need to be C just compliance, all of that being taken into account. So.
Getting our own tenant will allow that.
I hated the layers of security that were with those dot gov accounts.
Yeah.
And this is a pretty public position, so if, 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 if I need a high level of security, I don't know that, I don't know that's what this job was made for originally.
We have the ability to enable and disable like the two factors stuff on a per user basis, where we did not have the ability to do that with D I S. So we can have, we can set it on group security policies based on departments.
So Chief Hunter would have more security than we would, he would, he would need more, we, us, we just look and get it.
The whole group.
Right, but that, no, but that's what he's saying, different departments can have different levels of security, and like what you just said, we don't need a whole lot of security, so our, we, we wouldn't need to, we wouldn't need to enable all of those levels of security that.
Chris, that's a specific question.
Yeah.
One thing I hated about the other ones, whenever I went to put it on my phone, I had to essentially allow backdoor access to the state of Arkansas to my private cell phone and order to set up that email account on my phone. I'm still gonna have to do that with that AR dot gov.
So the mobile device management can be applied for a user group, and you can set up a council user group, or the M D M to decide.
So when coming to the backdoor, it's just gonna go on into the front door?
Well, we could automatically, yeah, or something like that.
That's what I'm saying.
I'm ready to go home.
Yeah.
Kyle has made a motion.
That's what your recommendation is, with you and James?
I'll give you a listen, I'm just, I'll raise a base, I'll give you a listen.
Good, thank you.
One more quick, one more quick thing, I'd like to have Arkansas Gaming Fish come to us and tell us what's going on. I've got everybody in my neighborhood on my back.
That now, it's going to be somewhere between now and the end of May.
Thank you, sir.
So just hold on, okay?
I'm good.
We've got all the permits.
Oh, thank you.
So.
Thank you, sir.
That's what, that's what I was told.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, Assistant Deputy Director, okay? Anything else? That, that is to be determined to date, okay? Uh, the announcement, next uh, regular city council meeting, uh, six thirty Tuesday, May the twenty-seventh, our next planning commission meeting, Tuesday, May the thirteenth, six thirty. And our next council meeting, uh, is next, uh, is June twelfth at uh, six thirty Thursday. Do I have a motion?
Hold on, you said council meeting? We have a council meeting in May.
Our, our regular city council meeting is May the twenty-seventh.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's we see, but the workshop is June.
Oh, the workshop, okay.
Motion adjourned.
Adjourned.
You got it? Okay, thank you.
And make sure, I wanna make sure my rear end is in the sphere when it is.
Okay.